I'd like to call the Tuesday, July 2nd, 2019 Papillion City Council Meeting into order. Ms. Brown, would you please take the role?
Sunday, Mumgarth, Gaines, Glover, Jaworski, Klug, Stube, Ingberg.
Would you please join me in the Pledge of Allegiance? Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Thank you. And do we have an affidavit of publication on file?
Yes, we do.
And a current copy of the Open Meetings Act is posted in the back of the council chambers. We've got several special things tonight. The first one is a proclamation I'd like to give on behalf of the Papillion Community Foundation. I'd like to invite Laura Swartz up. Laura?
I think everybody knows Laura, Executive Director of the Papillion Community Foundation, and a lot of the board is here as well. I want to give an official proclamation. Whereas the Papillion Community Foundation enhances the quality of life for the city of Papillion and surrounding communities, and whereas the Executive Director Laura Swartz has shown impressive dedication to facilitating large community events highlighting the community spirit of Papillion, and whereas the Papillion Community Foundation hosts multiple functions that exemplify the values of the Papillion community, such as Papillion Days, Winter Wonderland, Holiday Luncheon, and other events, and whereas the Papillion Community Foundation is instrumental as a cosponsor of Veterans Park with the city of Papillion honoring local veterans, and whereas the city of Papillion thanks Laura Swartz and the Papillion Community Foundation for balancing the needs of the community with Papillion's small-town traditions. Now therefore, I, David P. Black, do hereby honor the Papillion Community Foundation and the city of Papillion, and do hereby urge all citizens to acknowledge and appreciate the valued services provided by the foundation to the city and to the surrounding community and witness whereof, I have herein too set my hand and cause the official seal of the city of Papillion to be affixed this first day of July 2019.
I'd like to have Laura share a few words and then also introduce her board that's here as well.
Just wanted to say thank you very much. Obviously couldn't do any of it without all of you because you guys help in so many ways and certainly it's a joint effort, but certainly couldn't do it without our board. We have several board members here today, so will you guys stand up? Margaret White is our board president, and then we have Travis David, Mike Ruckstallis, Mike Newzall, Peggy Woltman, wave Peggy, and Curtis Range, and then again, this is just part of our board. They're very dedicated, they give a lot of volunteer hours, a lot of them have their own careers and businesses and just countless hours dedicated to the foundation and our community. And then I also have my family because I couldn't do it without them because they get voluntold quite often. So I have my son Matthew, will you stand up? And my husband Jerry, and my son Travis. And then our two brand-new interns. This is Brenna and Michaela. We have one intern now that will, from each high school, that will be with us for 23 months and learn all about nonprofits and then earn some scholarship money towards college. So this is the whole crew, not the whole crew, but a lot of the crew, so we want to say thank you to all of you. Please fire everybody that's sitting here. We couldn't do it without you, so thank you very much.
We've also got a new police officer that are going to swear in. Chief, invite you up to share a little bit.
Officer Nick Probst, will you join me up here? Officer Nicholas Probst, he was born in Bellevue, right next to Papillion. He was homeschooled and lived in this area, was raised in Omaha. He obtained his Associate's Degree in Applied Sciences in Criminal Justice from the Metro Community College. In January of 2014, he obtained his Bachelor of Arts degree in Management and Human Resources from Bellevue University. And so he had a path that brings him here today that was filled with adversity, but it also demonstrates the fact that he has a lot of perseverance, and that's one of the things I liked about this candidate. And now our first officer to graduate from the Sarpy Douglas Law Enforcement Academy. He sought a law enforcement position but had to take a position in retail, and that led him to take a job at Nebraska Furniture where he eventually ended up becoming a Training and Development Specialist, working for a manager. And that turned into an opportunity where they then moved on to take a similar position with Omaha Track. And when he came across the Papillion Police Department, he was on the career path to be a manager, and ultimately his decision came down to just one thing, what he wanted to do for the rest of his life. He wanted to make a difference in people's lives and in a community. And I don't think that anybody has a better answer to why you want to be in law enforcement because this took a long time, but it says a lot about him. And so we're very proud that he is the first graduate from the Papillion Police Department to graduate from the second class of our academy here in Sarpy, and so tonight is his swearing in.
Want to do a statement?
Absolutely. So tonight I brought with me my wife, Anna Probst. We've been married six and a half years, and we have two children and another one on the way. So I brought my wife, and then my mom and dad, Jeff and Renee Probst, who've all been very supportive with me, and they've really helped me through this process. They've just been a huge encouragement.
Who's going to pin your badge?
My wife, Anna.
Okay. You got your shirt ready to put down?
Yeah. Do the oath first or do the pen in first?
No, we'll do that.
Just getting ready for his wife.
Raise your right hand. I state your name.
I, Nicholas Probst.
Do solemnly swear.
Do solemnly swear.
That I will support the Constitution of the United States.
That I will support the Constitution of the United States.
And the Constitution of the State of Nebraska.
And the Constitution of the State of Nebraska.
Against all enemies.
Against all enemies.
Foreign and domestic.
Foreign and domestic.
That I will bear true faith.
That I will bear true faith.
And allegiance to the same.
And allegiance to the same.
That I take this obligation freely.
That I take this obligation freely.
And without mental reservation.
And without mental reservation.
Or for purpose of evasion.
And for purpose of evasion.
And that I will faithfully and impartially.
And that I will faithfully and impartially.
Perform the duties of the office of police officer.
Perform the duties of the police officer.
According to law and to the best of my ability.
According to law and the best of my ability.
And I do further swear.
And I do further swear.
That I do not advocate.
That I do not advocate.
Or am I a member of.
Or am I a member of.
Any political party or organization.
Any political party or organization.
That advocates the overthrow of the government.
That advocates the overthrow of the government.
Of the United States.
Of the United States.
Or of this state.
Or of this state.
By force or violence.
By force or violence.
And that during such time.
For during such time.
As I am in this position.
As I am in this position.
I will not advocate.
I will not advocate.
Nor become a member of.
Nor become a member of.
Any political party or organization.
Any political party or organization.
That advocates the overthrow of the government.
That advocates the overthrow of the government.
Of the United States.
Of the United States.
Or of this state.
Or of this state.
By force or violence.
By force or violence.
So help me God.
So help me God.
Congratulations.
Thank you.
Ms. Myers, Administrator's Report, please.
Thank you, Mayor. I've got several things to report tonight. Council may have noticed that attached to my admin report is a synopsis about what happened at the sewer agency meeting last week. Mayor Black, as you well know, sits on that board, but bottom line is that Sarpy County and all five cities have agreed to the agency's jurisdiction when it comes to providing sewer. That was a monumental step in this process, as well as the growth management plan was approved as well that outlines objectives of the agency, and again, where sewer service will be provided first. You may note on the map that there are a couple areas in Papillion's jurisdiction that will be in phase one that's scheduled to have service in 2024, so we're pretty excited to be a part of that project. Also, if you recall, last week, or I guess two weeks ago, you approved an ordinance to refund Public Works Building Bonds. We received a better rate than what we expected and realized nearly $384,000 in present value savings, so again, thank you for your support on that. Along those same lines, before we refinanced those bonds, Moody's reviewed the city financials and assigned a rating of AA1 to those bonds. That means the bonds are deemed high-quality and very low credit risk. Again, consequently, that's why we received good rates. But again, according to a 2015 Moody's presentation, only 8% of municipal bonds are rated AA1. So again, that puts us in an elite group. I didn't realize that, but that puts us in a very special group. So bottom line, thanks to all of you for your fiscal management to obtain such a high rating. Lastly, I guess, we've been talking about a mission statement. I know the council at several of our retreats have been talking about a mission statement. We have never really formalized that. Mayor Black and I think it's important as we move forward to develop a formal mission statement. So we've scheduled with an outside firm to meet with city council members, and that is scheduled tentatively for Tuesday, August 13th. We'll have a couple other focus groups that are together as well, but I'll get you out a formal invitation to that, but certainly we want your input at the very beginning regarding that process. Papillion Landing Community Tour is scheduled for Tuesday, July 9th at 5:00 p.m. I'll also send you a reminder. And then really lastly is the 2019 through 2020 budget. Our first reading will be August 6th, so Mayor Black and I would like to meet with council members, of course, in advance of that, so the two weeks between July 8th and July 18th. So I'll have Kendra provide you some dates and times that work, and then please let her know, and we'll sit down for about an hour and discuss the budget. So that's all I have. Thank you, and happy Fourth of July.
Thank you very much. Do we have a motion to approve the consent agenda?
Motion.
Motion by Councilman Klug.
Motion.
Seconded by Councilman Jaworski. Do we have any proponents? Do we have any opponents? Any council discussion? Please vote.
Sixteen zero eight.
Motion passes. Next is item E1, Ordinance 1841, an ordinance to annex certain real estate to the city of Papillion, Nebraska, and to provide for an effective date. This is a public hearing, and I'll open the public hearing. If we have anybody proponent that wants to speak in favor, go ahead and come on up. And when you come up, if you'd state your name for the record. And we do have quite a few people here, I don't know if everybody's going to talk, I'm going to limit testimony to five minutes. Welcome.
Evening. My name's Harlan Metzke. I'm a resident of River Chase, that would be sanitation improvement, District 209. My first experience with annexation was working with Chris as she explained how your CIT analysis worked. That was 2007. I think I've bugged her every year since then, and now I'm working on Amber, sorry. But Amber did give me the latest 2018 numbers. Our CIT is a pretty small CIT, River Chase, 34 units. It's now totally built out, a little over $12 million in valuation. We have had a 92 cent tax rate forever, with the intent to be able to get annexed, to get our cash balance up to the point where those numbers that Christie explained to me would work. We're pleased that it seems like we might be there, and really want to urge you to vote for that annexation. Our tax rate currently is 77 cents. The last three years, we've had to take it down five cents each year to be in compliance with that cash balance being within 50% of your budget. So we're currently at 77 cents, would go hopefully to your 45 cents. All of our residents are pretty excited about that possibility. And then, of course, we water our lawns, so we're looking forward to that also. So again, I thank you for the opportunity to speak. Our residents are pretty excited about being part of the city of Papillion.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Next, and if you'd state your name for the record.
I'm Bob Trummer. I'm the chairman of CIT Board 143 in the annexation packet. I would just like to say that we have worked hard with Christine Pryor, Amber, and Dan to get to this point. It's been a long haul for 143. We've been there quite a while. We have solicited inputs from the residents. We have gotten no negative inputs, all positive to this point. I don't know if there's any negative up here, but we are looking forward to it. I've had the honor of working with some very talented and dedicated board members for the last five years to get the CIT up and operating and working in a condition that should not be a great burden on the city, and I think we're ready for annexation, past ready. First moved into the area 20 years ago, and they were talking about annexation then. So it's been a long haul, everybody is anxious, a lot of members already think that we are annexed, so I hope you all vote positive. We've always felt we were part of Papillion. It'd be nice to make it official.
Thank you. Thank you. Do we have any other proponents? Do we have any opponents? Anybody neutral? I'll close the public hearing. Next is item E2, Related Item, Ordinance 1842, an ordinance to change the official zoning map of the city of Papillion in accordance with Section 20532 of the Papillion Municipal Code to adopt a zoning map and to apply existing or future zoning regulations, property use regulations, building ordinances, electrical ordinances, plumbing ordinances, and all other regulatory ordinances of the city of Papillion pursuant to Nebraska Revised Statute 16901, and provide for an effective date. This is also a public hearing. I'll open the public hearing. I'll call for proponents. All the other proponents I will carry forward to this one, so unless you want to, you don't need to speak again, but are there any proponents? Opponents? Close the public hearing. Next is item F1, Resolution R190133, a resolution to approve the appointment of Matthew Kovar as library director. Is there a motion to approve Resolution R190133?
Motion.
Motion by Councilman Ingberg, seconded by Councilman Gaines. I will call for proponents. I believe there's somebody here wants to speak.
Glover.
Seconded was by Glover.
Yes.
Thank you. Both a little bald on top, so. I will go ahead and call for proponents. If anybody wants to speak, go ahead and come up, but just somebody's coming up mainly for education of the public that might be watching. I want to explain the process a little bit. Library director is a unique position, and it is an appointed position like a number of our others, but in this one, it actually has to receive first a recommendation by the library board. So the library board makes a recommendation to the mayor. Mayor then, if agrees, then makes the appointment to the city council, and then the city council affirms that. So the library board has taken the formal action to recommend Matt, and with no hesitation, I put him up for appointment as well. Proponents? And welcome. And it's an honor to have you here.
The Sump Memorial Library Board of Advisors is pleased to place in nomination Mr. Matt Kovar as director of Sump Memorial Library. Matt comes to us after four years, four and a half years, as the assistant librarian, and during that time, he has served in various capacities to support various functions of the library, and really has gotten into the internal workings of the library, and so we are very, very pleased to place his name in nomination. Matt, do you want to come up? This is Matt Kovar. We're happy to place his name in nomination. Thank you.
And I don't think I asked, can you state your name for the record?
Pardon?
Can you state your name for the record?
Oh, I'm sorry. Paul Schroeder.
And you are the president of the library board still, correct?
Yes, yes.
Thank you again for that. Appreciate it. Do we have any other proponents? Do we have any opponents? Any council discussion? Mr. Glover.
Mayor, I happened to be on a committee when the renovation was going on across the street, and actually when Matt was hired, and I was very impressed with him at that time and somewhat disappointed that he wasn't hired as the person to lead the library at that time, and I understand there was maybe some issues with certification maybe at that time, but I've been very impressed. I said in those meetings, he was on top of everything and very organized, and I'm just happy that he's the one that the library board chose to lead our library.
Thank you very much. Any other council discussion? Please vote.
Sixteen zero eight.
Motion passes. Matt, with that being an appointed position, you get to do the oath of office too, and it's the long one we just did for the police officer, so I'll be up. I don't have this one memorized. Raise your right hand. I state your name.
I'm Matt Kovar.
Do solemnly swear.
Do solemnly swear.
That I will support the Constitution of the United States.
That I will support the Constitution of the United States.
And the Constitution of the State of Nebraska.
And the Constitution of the State of Nebraska.
Against all enemies.
Against all enemies.
Foreign and domestic.
Foreign and domestic.
That I will bear true faith.
That I will bear true faith.
And allegiance to the same.
And allegiance to the same.
And that I take this obligation freely.
And that I take this obligation freely.
And without mental reservation.
And without mental reservation.
Or for the purpose of evasion.
Or for the purpose of evasion.
And that I will faithfully and impartially.
And that I will faithfully and impartially.
Perform the duties of the office.
Perform the duties of the office.
Library director.
Library director.
According to law.
According to law.
And to the best of my ability.
And to the best of my ability.
And I do further swear.
And I do further swear.
That I do not advocate.
That I do not advocate.
Or am I a member of.
Or am I a member of.
Any political party or organization.
Any political party or organization.
That advocates the overthrow.
That advocates the overthrow.
Of the government of the United States.
Of the government of the United States.
Or of this state.
Or of this state.
By force or violence.
By force or violence.
And that during such time.
And that during such time.
As I am in this position.
As I am in this position.
I will not advocate.
I will not advocate.
Nor become a member of.
Nor become a member of.
Any political party or organization.
Any political party or organization.
That advocates the overthrow.
That advocates the overthrow.
Of the government of the United States.
Of the government of the United States.
Or of this state.
Or of this state.
By force or violence.
By force or violence.
So help me God.
So help me God.
Congratulations.
Thank you.
Matt, I asked Matt if he would maybe share a few words and maybe even a little bit of what his vision for the library is.
Hello. I hope that's high enough. I'm a little tall than most people. First of all, I'd like to thank Mayor Black, the library board, all the city staff that I've worked with over the last four and a half years for their support, and I'd especially like to thank the library staff. Two of our staff members are here tonight. It's been an amazing experience working with all of them and all of you for the past four and a half years, and I can't wait for the years to come. The library is at a really exciting point. As Paul mentioned, we've been through a lot over the past several years, and I think we're ready to move forward. We've done a renovation together. We've, you know, started the process of planning our portion of the presence of Papillion Landing, which I think for the short term is really going to be probably the most exciting thing that we're a part of. To be able to be a part of a facility that I'm pretty sure no one that's a public library anywhere near here is a part of is pretty incredible. To be able to partner with rec staff to offer different programming, to be able to help our patrons reach technology, our digital resources in a new way. We're really going to be going to the public where they are instead of expecting them to come to us, which hopefully will then cause them to come to us at the library down here as well. I think it's kind of a new era of library services for Papillion. It's different, and it truly is different than any of the other libraries in our area, so that sets us apart. We've also really built a strong core of library services already at Sump, and I think one of the examples that I think we think of all the time that really shows how important our library is to this community is the fact that the youth program that we've built constantly gets the highest attendance at any youth program in the state of Nebraska outside of the multi-branch systems of Lincoln and Omaha. I think when you look at the size of some of the other communities and how large their libraries are, the fact that we have that many people that want to come to our programs really shows how great of a staff we have, how great of a community we have, and I think we can only go up from here. So I'm really excited. Again, thank you to everybody, and I'm excited for the future.
Thank you again.
Thank you.
And just share real quick, councils aware, we've got the Leadership Academy, the 18-month programmer, who brings somebody from every department, bring them together and kind of introduce them to the whole operation of the city government, who we are, what's our values, and then just basic aspects of leadership, and Matt was in one of those classes, and so he's already started building relationships with department heads all over, so those relationships will go a long way. And one of the things we've been talking about for like the last couple of years is who are our next-generation leaders? Amber being hired falls into that conversation. We've had some other promotions, but Matt and I actually had a conversation, I don't know, a year ago about is there an interest maybe in being a leader here, and he said absolutely. So it's neat to be able to see the next generation, especially in the library. 50, 60, 70, 80-year-olds think of the library probably a lot different than 20, 30, 40-year-olds, and so Matt actually having you lead the library for the next generation, really appreciate that, so thank you. Mr. Mumgarth.
I just want to repeat something that I've told council members many times. Anytime that a city council member begins to think they're really important, they should remember, more of our citizens know who the library director is than who their city councilman is. So congratulations, Matt. I think that is very true.
It's all the regular agenda items, no committees have met. Any comments from the floor? Seen no comments from the floor. Any council comments? It's been a quiet couple of weeks. About the only things of note that I did, Sarpy Chamber had a reception along with Sarpy Economic Development, primarily with the major investors that are supporting Sarpy County economic development, giving them updates on projects. Ms. Myers already mentioned the wastewater agency meeting. That really is going, people are going to look back at that, well, I don't know if anybody will look back, but it'll be noted that that vote at the wastewater agency really was a historical meeting to get all five cities in the county to come together and agree on a growth management plan, who has jurisdiction over what areas, and actually then to define and adopt what the first phases of development are going to be. That's major, and if anybody wants to see the map that does talk about the growth areas and the phases, in the Administrator's Report and the council packet is the wastewater agency agreement, and Figure 2 is a map, and the yellow on that map is the first phase of development, so you can see that. Most of it's around Springfield and Papillion. Should've mentioned the Moody's rating. Again, that's getting an AA1 rating, that's the second-highest bond rating you can get from Moody's, and again, that's not an insignificant event. A lot of that is council policies that have been established, decisions made by the council, but really the work of Nancy and Chris, so thank you very much for that we've got that. As we know, that's saving us hundreds of thousands of dollars by being able to have that rating. The only other thing, we had a ribbon-cutting downtown, Team Moms, another downtown business, and it's another one of those where it's a Papillion resident, had an idea, running a business out of their home, wanted to go read- had an idea, running a business out of their home, wanted to go retail, and downtown was the perfect area to start a business. And so it's nice to have them in there if you can go support them sometime. I think that is all of the major updates. Do we have a motion to adjourn? Motion by Councilman Glover, second by Councilman Stube. Please vote.
Six eight zero nays.
We are adjourned.